Good evening. Sorry we're a little late. Uh, what was meeting of the planning board, the city board, now to order? Meeting of the planning board, the city board is going to convene this Thursday, the third day of our 2013 and duly advertised in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Land Act, NJSA 10, called the 40th 6th, special scheduled meeting, published as part of the annual meeting schedule. Now this meeting should commence on Friday, January 18, 2013. On the notice of the case, heard, also published on Friday, 10 days before today. Mark, please go roll.
Councilman Goldman.
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez, yes. Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Carvallo.
Here.
Commissioner Duvend.
Here.
Commissioner Chauvin.
Here.
Secretary Urban. Commissioner Rivera.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Vice President Ross. Chairman Haas.
Here. Vice President Ross. Our president wishes to declare the United States of America to be a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being just as one.
Okay. First order of business is to have a couple of minutes, the moving minutes of September 12th, the last meeting. We have a minutes before you and I have a motion over minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Carvallo. Second by Commissioner Mazzus. Okay, Mark, please go roll.
Councilman Goldman.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Carvallo.
Aye.
Commissioner Duvend.
Aye.
Commissioner Chauvin.
Aye.
Secretary Urban.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera.
Aye.
Commissioner Moreno.
Aye.
Chairman Haas.
Aye.
Okay, we have two adjournments this evening. Uh, if you are here to hear the case P 1412, 917, 931 South, or have you, Gallo Schwarzman, uh, that will be heard at the next meeting on November 7th. If you're here to hear the case of P 0313, 1109 Nellaway, Osmond, or El Park, uh, that also will be adjourned until November 7th. Okay, so, uh, first case, first matter for tonight will be P 0812, 2935 Smith Street, Alzira, Atunes. Could you raise your right hand when you saw this where the test on your case was?
Thank you, Mr. President. No plan.
Have a seat. A seat. Stating in another version, use the microphone. Okay, let me see it first. Are you a consultant?
My name is Thomas Edwards, 35 years old. Special.
That would be the circuit. No, wait, the counsel, please. And Mr. Chairman, uh, visit. All right, Mr. Atunes, uh, I would just ask you a couple of questions, all right? Um, because you were, you were here at the last meeting and you're originally requesting some relief, which was, you had wanted us to approve a condition on a part approval that was related to the approval of a garage on the property, and you also wanted approval of a condition that was that part you want a C V two bit on the property, is that right?
That's right.
Okay. Now you give us two documents, just a word, there's an answer which is which. Uh, one of them is a survey of 2931 Smith Street, and the other is a survey of 35 Smith Street. Which is the subject of the application?
The application is 35.
Okay. And if I was going to, if I was going to put them together, so I can relate the two parties together, 35 is on the left, 29 31 on the right, correct?
Yes, if you're facing the property, 35 is on the left, I'm on the right.
Oh, so I only give up one. You got one. Um, the garage, the 27th, we've been talking about, is the frame garage, was in the back of the car, right?
That's right.
Okay, and so if you put the two surveys together, you can see that the three garage stratus property, so there's an issue, property, right?
Correct, go, go right forward with it to my, uh...
Sorry.
We already have a little bit on to the, uh, the property 35.
Okay, and the property on the left, except 35 is the one that you're not going from this floor to the other house.
Yes, that's the 35.
Okay, all right. Um, so regarding to the frame garage, um, we, we have a discussion, you and I and, uh, and, uh, Mr. Carvallo, the, uh, Commissioner Carvallo, also the construction official, we talked about, for the D and T, right?
That's right.
Um, and are you, uh, are you prepared to give the city board a temporary C O, uh, that you will be prepared to take down that frame garage in some period of time determined by Commissioner Carvallo?
Oh, yes.
Um, and explain us the run of the C V two bit, now this work required a bit of a C V two bit. Um, this, this, uh, belongs to the East Drive. Correct.
It's, it's, uh, the only school, already finished, and, uh, we were putting in the, I put papers in for the, for some, right, for the, the engineers stopped by, and the, uh, the soil is clayish.
Sorry, I can't understand the engine.
You can use it.
Your friends are waiting for a voice.
Okay, um, yes. Okay, I have the papers in front of me, or, uh, papers, paper soles, standard, uh, white paper soles. The, the, the whole property, it's all paper soles, the dry glue in the front, um, the, the soil in this area is, is clayish. So, uh, I was advised that it wasn't needed, the C V two bit wasn't, wasn't needed.
Who advised you?
That was I, that was I.
The architect advised. Okay, but it depends whether the architect advised it, I've just made a couple of things up, correct? The workers are, the workers, the papers are, is that correct?
It's for order.
All right, and there are papers which, because your understanding is, may I quote, correct, uh, allows water to be, is that right? Uh, Mr. Kennedy, ready to put in your, the C V two bit and whether or not, and this is the paper understands, the reason that we're hearing this is because we're giving approvals, there were conditions on the approval. Yeah, because yes, we're, well, we need changes to those conditions, and right now we're just talking about the C V two bit.
Yes, I wrote a letter from their engineer, who's also, uh, architect, Mr. Kessender, made to describe the soils, how they're semi-inferior, uh, lay condition. Normally we require a C V two bit, not just for durability, but for volume.
But?
Volumes or your strong. But since the applicant has installed permeable brick papers, which are reinforced medicines and very rassful, and they're permeable, then I don't see a problem with addressing these weighty conditions.
And with regards to the, to the frame garage, uh, Commissioner Carvallo, do you have any thoughts on that? Monsieur?
Uh, no, yes, I do. My opinion is that the house is built in a complex way, it's a plan. The only issue that we have with this property is that the garage, right, is approached on new survey, and I would like to see several, so, we can, in terms of, and then allow them to deal with the garage issue over time. The property is owned by the gentleman, and he's, so it's, they're, they're not going anywhere.
Is there any timeframe that you have in mind on the, uh, alleviation of the fact that the garage is empty?
I think I don't think that is important, but this is something that the gentleman needs to go back to, is if you come in and figure out what happened. He's going to have to re, and rebuild some of the backyard, cost, cost, something, money to do this, and right now...
So this garage has to come out?
Yes.
So that when that comes back, that concrete has to come out, it's going to have to seal up the end of the garage, and that's what we need for the property, like, there's a picture.
This is something.
So what you're suggesting is that we should, the city should temporarily seal on a condition that, six months, nine months, that garage, that situation to take care of?
We can take care of that on our side, in social, in term of our side, and I think that because the gentleman is obviously to see, and is still, uh, has obviously been deep, uh, we can set that condition on the deed, whereas if he decides to sell the house tomorrow, the condition is set on the deed, or he can't sell it till that.
So we would make that as a permanent record, I think?
And revise the rest of the issue.
Commissioners, do you have any questions about this process that we're proposing tonight, how would these people get the temporary C O?
And, Mr. Chairman, I can just add, the reason why this is sort of unusual, you see, here, is because, uh, because with the garage still standing, this property has too much coverage on it, right? It violates the nervous coverage. If you don't do it this way, then these folks have to go out, hire a lawyer, hire an architect, and file an application for parents to come up for this work, and ask you to allow the garage to stay. It's a neighbor, we're comfortable with telling the board that they should go ahead and allow this garage to sit indefinitely and not have a back of parents. Another idea, want to have some money for the parents, so this is a way to get them in, and also get them locked in on the date of when this garage is coming.
It also allow, allow this gentleman to move in for the house, if he don't, right? Any commissioners, any comments? Is there anyone in the audience, right, in the comments regarding this application? If not, may I have a motion to proceed, given the court's work of justice discussed?
Motion's proceed.
Scovio, Commissioner Scovio, seconded by Secretary Urban, Mark, please go roll.
Councilman Goldman.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Carvallo.
Aye.
Commissioner Duvend.
Aye.
Commissioner Chauvin.
Aye.
Secretary Urban.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera.
Aye.
Commissioner Moreno.
Aye.
Chairman Haas.
Aye. Good luck.
Uh, I skipped over the resolutions, so we went to the back, a little bit back, I told them this, uh, uh, resolution P 4807, this is, well, I'm going to go taking the resolution first, P 0913, 82 First Street, uh, 82 First Street Elizabeth, Howes LLC, that was a case that was heard last month. Um, Commissioner Fuller President, last month, again, Bonton List, Commissioner Chauvin, and, uh, those two cannot go on the other side. May I have a motion to approve, uh, resolution P 0907? Motion. Motion, Councilman Goldman, second. Second, Mark, please go roll.
Councilman Goldman.
Aye.
Commissioner Carvallo.
Aye.
Commissioner Moreno.
Aye.
Commissioner Duvend.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera.
Aye.
Chairman Haas.
Aye. Second resolution before us is in the matter of terminating this application, P 4807. Something very unique, particularly that I, oh, years, I've been on this board for 21 years, and I've seen this, and it's like, they're, they're, they're big. Back in 2007, we approved the subdivision, uh, the property goes to Turner Land, uh, the city has come to us, the city attorney's office has come to us and asked us to look at this resolution, uh, which will rescind the subdivisions we created back in 2007. For the very simple reason that the applicant is failing to post the appropriate guarantees required by the, of our prior resolutions of the board, and is also pursuant to the provision of MJSA 4055D dash 53. Uh, and what the board is being asked to do is to expunge the enforced set subdivision map filed on May 22nd, 2008, as a result of the ongoing failure of the applicant to comply with the enforced set provisions of the municipal land use law. So basically, we're going back to 2007, we're doing the way with the subdivision we created there, going back to our subdivision, victory subdivision we created in 2005, and we base that.
Yes, the subdivision that was before, uh, when they went to file, they didn't comply with the number five law. Not that they did not comply with the number five law, there was some bonds that were to be, speaking of, citizens, they did not comply with those issues. They did not meet all the conditions of their revolution. They wanted to file the number four, that was without meeting all those conditions, right? So we're seeing to rescind that subdivision.
So, so one of the things that we will do, if you vote to rescind this, is we have to know if the county have a clerk that formally requests that the county expunge the map filed as number 848A on May 22nd, 2008, and return it to the previous division. I guess we are back to the future, back to the future, yes. Do, do commissioners understand what we're asking you to do at this point, do you have any questions about this process? As I said, 21 years, I've been on this board, I've never seen this before, uh, but I understand the feeling. Uh, may I have a resolution to, uh, move, may I have a motion to move this resolution? Motion. Motion by Councilman Goldman, seconded by Secretary Urban, Mark.
Councilman Goldman.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Carvallo.
Aye.
Commissioner Duvend.
Aye.
Commissioner Chauvin.
Aye.
Secretary Urban.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera.
Aye.
Commissioner Moreno.
Aye.
Chairman Haas.
Aye. Okay. We can calm down now to business here. Application P 1113, 686, 762, Captain House Road, Prologis, LP, Mr. Hale, joining for the afternoon. Mr. Hale, what do you think?
And the county clerk, Mr. Hale, representing the applicant, project, deal. Very nice, yeah. This is an exciting redevelopment project, it was an old warehouse building that's outdated, poor condition, and it's approximately the same size, slightly larger than what it proposed. And what we're looking to do is demolish that building, it's actually a secondary building here, too, that will also be demolished. And the applicant is looking to construct a brand new 482,000, 500 square foot warehouse distribution building with 116 loading cars, along with 281 trailer parking spaces, 325 passenger vehicle spaces. The property is located at Castle Road Development Area, which permits this warehouse distribution use. And as I mentioned, existing structures will be demolished, despite completely renovating and being done to accommodate this use. There are some variances in design papers associated with the application. Our witnesses will write in case of on support that, uh, those, those variances in the design papers. And as usual, the city was kind of, prior to some, and the time, we, their department consultants, and the other departmental comments, and we have no problem addressing any of those comments, and our witnesses will do that this evening, so, hopefully for sure. Yes, I'd like to pull on Bonton Parkus from Relais.
I do.
Victor first.
I do, Victor, the name, represent the city, where?
State your name, your voting, and we'll give your address.
Sure, my name is Bonton Parkus, B O T O N, I F A R K A S, and, uh, Prologis. We're located at One Meadowlands Plaza, Suite 100, in East River, New Jersey.
Mr. Parkus, I know that the board, Jake's very, and I'm, although, she's a little bit about a company, which you just briefly explained your position with Prologis, and would you give the company, including its particular presence in the city, please?
Sure, uh, so, Prologis is a real estate investment trust, we invest mainly in the industrial sector.
Councilman Goldman, do you want to look at the witness today?
You're looking from?
Right, B, O, N.
Parkus, K, A, R, K, it's very near.
So, uh, Prologis is a real estate investment trust, we invest mainly in the industrial, uh, sector. We're, we're trading in the stock exchange, and, um, in New Jersey, we own, uh, we're constructing here, so we're almost 22, 23 million worth of, in New Jersey, and, uh, plus that, we own. And, and, well, we have, we have, we have a lot of land to develop, which, uh, too, we're here with, but, uh, when we're finished, we'll probably back down to almost 2 million worth in, uh, in Elizabeth.
This is the second apartment you've seen two months ago, on your apartment, what happened?
That's correct. That's correct.
And that was approximately 800?
Yes, that's not, this, uh, there's 700 and change, 700, that's, it's a 530. And anyway, my, my position, from the, uh, the investment officer, I represent mainly this Northeast region, and, uh, I, I'm in charge of the real estate development side of, of the business, and we're, yeah, we're very, that's great, we have property management, development, and also, um, uh, acquisitions within, in-house.
Currently, have existing warehouses in, in, in Jersey?
Yes, if you, um, mainly, I mean, some of the new ones are at, uh, with, uh, Julie mentioned, Elmeron, Elmeron Development, Dada Avenue. Um, it's, uh, it's right next to buildings, we relocated FedEx Express from, actually, this, from this site, a few years ago, and we relocated, relocated, and then almost, onto Dada Avenue. And we also have another, about 140, 3,000 worth of building, which has a whole different entity.
Now, can you give a little background as to what's the structure, private location, now, could board, explain that, please?
Sure, yeah, so, so we moved that, from this site to the other site, this building was built in, I think it's about 1968, and, uh, we had, that, some slab was overloaded by some previous tenants, FedEx was one of the master least.
Can't before, can't before the sports, over years ago, they asked to leave, is that, out of that?
That's right, yeah, so, so, I don't want to, you know, rehash too much, but in general, what we ended up having is FedEx wanted to move out, their, their people from the building, and, and we asked the board for, um, for trails, and for the, to have off the trails outside, because they didn't feel it was safe, and it, so, so in the meantime, we, we made a deal with FedEx to basically build a brand new facility for them in, in Elizabeth, so, in the meantime, um, we finished that last year, last May, maybe within last May, June, and then this building, uh, we're in the middle of, of figuring out exactly how to design it, and what to design here. And, and now we're, we're ready to move forward, but in general, we had some slab issues, and the building is obsolete, so, we're demolishing it.
All right, now, in your site of the residential, as you're describing, generally, explain what type of building and site work is going to be done?
Sure, uh, so, so the building, it's, it's a cross docked building, typical for, uh,
Cross dock?
Cross dock, so the dock, docks are very short line up, and, and, and it's cross dock, meaning there's docks on both sides of the building. So typically, um, tenants, or third party logistics tenants, and trying, uh, type of operations, or larger, uh, retail distribution companies tend to be located based on these buildings.
Just generally, if you indicate who you work, you get FedEx, it's like, generally, the nature of the tenants, you have to grab, uh, the work, but, sure, within the world, it's, yeah, it's, uh, we do have, yeah, we do have, pretty much, I mean, whatever, uh, retailer, or, or, see them,
Home Depot, Walmart, Target, uh, Target, it's a lot, they're all, um, Amazon, I mean, the types of tenants that, I mean, including NFI, for their, for logistics, FedEx, D H L, some, companies like that.
And right now, you don't have a, 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 a space?
We, yeah, currently, we do not have a tenant yet, but, uh, given this prime location, where, where we're located, and the design of the facility that we proposed, we're actually, we're, yeah, we're pretty confident, uh, I don't want to chase it, but, 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 yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get through this.
Now, uh, what would you generally expect, based on your experience, the type of tenants, would be the hours of operation, and number of employees, and expected fares to come aside?
Sure, I think, so, in, in general, depends on the tenant, but, uh, typically, we prefer definitely a random port area, like, 24/7 operation, and, and typically, on a 24/7 operation, it's, it's really three sheds that end up happening. So, so, you know, for this size of building, I would say that, you know, you could have anywhere from 300 to 500, let's say, employees, but it's really sheds, right? So, so the first shed would have a majority of maybe 60 or 70 percent, and it winds down, with the last shed, the third shed, really just having 15 employees, or, or something like that, for cleanup, and just really getting like a FedEx day.
And I know that in your art, you're, you're, you're able to describe the, the nature of the construction, and, and, you have other buildings in the city?
Right, I mean, the, the construction, I mean, we, we try to build a pretty efficient building, making it have insulated, precast walls, or, heat efficiency, uh, we can have T5 or T8, like, for energy efficiency, uh, energy efficient, like, in terms of just, I mean, it's precast, it's, it's a simple, it's a simple lot, so it's, it's economy for precast walls, uh, looking at this, I don't know, the case, I was just going to talk about some of the statistics, but, the general point is that, season plus this.
And you had an opportunity to, you, 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 department of comments, and all, the, partners recommended, you had an opportunity to include September 26th, 2013, by a department consultants, and another, I should, testimony, or detail, generally, any problem complying with any of those regulations? with any of those requirements?
No problem. Thank you. I have any further questions of this report at this time?
Commissioners, are there any questions of this report at this time?
I'll have a couple of questions, I don't think yes. How many sort of jobs, can you answer this? This, you might ask, like... My question is, how many jobs you have, if you have the time, as someone, and what type of jobs, if I want to apply, how do I go about applying to them?
Sure. Yeah, that's a good question. Right, no, I'm going, right, besides the construction jobs, obviously, but more permanent jobs. So, just to back up, we're, so obviously, we're going home, you know, we're not going to be tenants in the future, but nonetheless, in terms of, in terms of, or the type of jobs that most of these tenants have, the majority is warehouse type of workers, pusher driver person, and even factors depending on what they do. And typically, most of these facilities will have anywhere from, depending, because that quarter's, or it could be close to 10% on this floor, it could be much less, maybe 3%, 5% of this, it really depends on who the user is. So there will be some office, office jobs also across that. Now, in terms of, in terms of, okay, obviously, applying to jobs, and that, I know in other used pathways, what we typically do, is we work with, with the city, the job banks, you know, and also, also training in terms of having, having the city be ready, or at least the employees be ready for when tenants like this come in, and they're, they're ready to...
And speaking, like I said, with this, that these are the development companies beginning to do exactly what you described, and obviously, we'll reach out to them, and tell our tenants to reach out to them.
Exactly.
When you're, citizens, have first crack at it, or beginning, have first crack at some of those jobs?
Right. Well, obviously, we can't guarantee that, but in general, what we can do is, as the tenants come in, we can put them in touch with the, with the, with the government, and different, basically, job banks or job type of organizations with them, essentially.
Because always, always we're just trying to make sure that our citizens, able to obtain employment, and certainly, ask what you could, look at that situation, we have a train that's still ready to, to enroll, that perhaps might be, that they can probably train there, so that's a way that we could, also, we need to connect and roll that, and...
Yeah, and it is something that we do, we work with our tenants, to do exactly what you were suggesting, so, you know, again, I could leave the worst of water, I just can't make a drink, but...
Counselor, if I must understand your point, they're building, they're building, they're already a building, the tenants coming in are not the locals, they're the tenants. They will do their best to provide the tenants with information, and as well, the organization to your town. When people come in, they'll listen to all the companies now, getting very aggressive, trying to help our citizens in finding a position.
That's all the essence, the chairman's, chairman's essence.
That's the message you're asking, yeah, I'm sure. Knowing Prologis' history, this town, I think that they're, they prove the best they can.
Yeah, that's all the essence, try, best to, see what you're waiting on, citizens here, listeners, that they see their people, that's all the essence. Ask them to work.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Marcus, seeing none, Counselor?
Yes, I now call on Michael Marinelli, former professional engineer.
State your name, your voting, and give your address.
Sure. Michael Marinelli, I F A R I N E L I, from National Engineering, 261, believe in that highly important jersey.
Mr. Marinelli, I know that you're a firm resident of your board's board, and occasionally, for yourself, if you've seen your board, you have a bit of your board experience, air protection, license, if you hold, and whether you testify or qualify towards it, except as an actor.
Sure. I'm a civil engineering graduate, graduate of Harvard University, vice 1999. I've been a licensed professional in state of New Jersey for six and a half years. I have an attorney, professional testimony in front of both zoning planning boards throughout the state, but I've never had the pleasure of being in front of these boards.
Have you made your first only vote?
I have come.
I have.
I have, yes.
And your, will your licenses are currently loaded?
That's right.
We're accepted as the next representative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Have you, give the board your, your high-o-maniest statement, and testifying, Marcus?
I'm not understanding this at all.
We, you've heard your high-o-maniest statement, and your testimony, Marcus, if you could give the board an overview of the existing site conditions, and then move on to the approaches they proposed?
Sure. The board refers to exhibit A1. Entitled Prologis Port Elizabeth, Lot 1, Lot 12, 31A, 1400 and 1430, 33.5 acres, existing conditions exhibit, dated 10/3/13.
That is page three of the in-depth commissioners' hand?
That is correct. It is an aerial photograph representation of the site's existing conditions. For the purpose of my presentation, north will be to the right, as depicted in the upper right-hand corner. The lot does indicate is Lot 1, Lot 1, Lot 12, 31A, 1400 and 1430, the tax map of the city of Elizabeth, commonly known as 66762, Capes Road, is in a regular lot that lies between North Avenue, which is to the right of the plant on the north side of the project, and the traffic signal that enters into the Jersey Garden Boulevard, or Jersey Gardens Mall facility. The property has access off of Cap House Avenue, three locations, central to the site, and from its south, with additional properties on North Avenue, and emergency access off of North Avenue. The overall property is a total of 33.54 acres, is located entirely within the MRC commercial zone, but the Cap House Development Area overlay is on this property. Immediately to the east are the existing, are existing weapons and rear, further, further, excuse me, to the west are the weapons and rear, just, yes, the western side, or the top of the plant, before you, to the main area. Further west is the forthcoming, the New Jersey Turnpike. To the south, the commercial developments, including the Hotel District, Seabreeze, and the Jersey Garden Vals, which are depicted on the left side of the exhibit A. To the north and east of the project are various commercial properties, most of which are commercial distribution centers and/or warehouses. Some of them, especially the one immediately north, across North Avenue, is currently in the line. The existing site has on a 7,800, 700 and 8,330 square foot building, 490,800 square foot, of which lies on the western side of the site, and as Mr. Marcus explained, was where the FedEx is located. There's also a small, personal building, a 7,500 square foot, off of it. Yes, a small tax pool of 7,500 square foot, located central to the site. As you can see in the exhibit, there, this site is developed, basically, property, the property line, we're using a lot of trailer storage and park parking, all of which is being, opposed to being removed. If I may, mark it to evidence, exhibit A2. A2 is an exhibit entitled Prologis Port Elizabeth, Lot 1, Lot 12, 31A, 1400 and 1430, 33.5 acres, proposed subplan exhibit, dated 10/3/2013.
Page four in hand.
Which is page four in hand. The exhibit in front of you, now marked A2, is a representation of the proposed development, the same aerial background as was in A1. As you can see in the exhibit, the proposal is to remove the existing building and cancel any improvements, and construct in its place a 482,500 square foot warehouse, which is approximately 15,000 square foot less than the existing structures. The building will lie on the southern side of the site, and we orient in northeast and west. You can hear more from the architect at the moment, but there are plans for office spaces on both the east and west of the suns. There are park or vehicle parking spaces on each of those of the suns, alone as 325 hundred wide eighteen foot parking spaces, eight which are the main parking spaces. The warehouse itself will have 112 dock locations and four driving ramps. The four driving ramps are located on the four corners of the structure from the loading side to the northern and southern sides of the building. The applicant is also looking 281 storage, trailer storage spaces that are 12 foot by 55 foot in dimension, 169 of which are on the northwest corner of the property, along the North Avenue frontage, and then there are 56 storage spaces on the north and south side of the building, direct opposite to the dock or locations. The applicant is proposing to secure these areas with an eight-foot-high children's security fence on the north and south side of the buildings. They come off a corner of the, of the office space, run along the storage area, and connect back to the building, likewise on the north side, so that the loading areas are both secure. Additionally, there'll be an eight-foot-high children's security fence around the trailer storage area that's located on the northwest corner, on the North Avenue frontage.
There could be gates?
There will be, yes, there'll be gates at four locations, the northeast, northwest, southwest, and southeast corners, for security purposes.
Question, there's still three driveways. Will there still be three?
There will be three driveways.
There will be no drive, there will be no more drives?
That's correct. We're talking this line a little bit, where, the three driving locations located on the western side of Cap House Avenue, one on the northern side, that frontage, it's for truck access. There is a circulation, circulation loop road that's 36 foot wide, that circulates up the north side of the building, along the west, western property line, and then down the southern side. The southern exit or access is a right-in, right-out access, where the northern one is a full-moving driveway. There is a third driving location proposed, central to the site, more closely than the north, I'm sorry, the southeast corner of the building. That is a 25-foot-wide driveway that is intended for the passenger vehicles accessing the office areas of this facility, direct off Cap House Road. That is also a full-moving driveway.
So how would the passenger vehicles get to the other end of the building? You said there might be offices?
They would, they would also use this loop road. This is just an alternative egress for those using the eastern side of the building.
There's a gate there, where the truck is going to come in, and he's going to turn left, go into the loading area, that gate, the opening there?
Depending on the certain standards of the tenant in place, yes.
I can see trucks to find out, but the bars can't get back to the offices.
The, the trucks, the truck stage, I think is what you're referring to?
No, the truck comes out of that Gasket Road, turns right into this driveway, gets to where the gate is, the gate's closed. Now, he sits there, waits for the gate to go, get open, and then if a vehicle comes in, people going to the office and back, do they get around that truck?
No, the, the way would be blocked if the gate was closed, and the truck would have to sit. There is a long drive, along the northeast section, where trucks can stage, easily designed, is there are six foot-wide accessways, which would allow for the three lanes, so the truck could pull over, and still allow two-way traffic to bypass if the trucks happen to be staged in that area.
That answers.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. So, if I get this right, trucks enter in off Gasket Road, traveling with the traffic and coming around, exiting south, again, up again, Gasket Road.
Say again?
They're coming in, Gasket Road.
From North Avenue?
Yes, the North Avenue, you're making a right on North Avenue, traveling down to Gasket Road, entering the warehouse, right there, traveling north, searching the building, emptying load, whatever, coming out, down south, there's another exit, south.
Nice, yeah?
Correct.
And, you know, again, the exit, the northern entrance is an entrance, will it be?
No, the northern access is a full-moving driveway, which means it will allow line up, which will be right out.
Southern driveway?
It's only a right-in, right-out, so you'll only be able to access it, traffic south on, on Cap House Road, and you'll only, when you're exiting the site, you'll only be able to turn it right out, and head down.
With this light?
Exactly.
So, like, there's light there?
That's correct. This is a signaling possession on the southeast, southeast corner of the building. The refuse to recycle will be hidden internally to the building. We have also slotted two dock or locations for the potential use of compact cars, but as is regular with this industry, refuse to recycle will normally be handled internally to the building, where recycle will be bailed, and shipped out via a, one of the dock or We're speaking briefly about the truck movements, and what may make it a little bit clearer to market into evidence is exhibit A3. My office is prepared at the request of the township professionals, Harvard Consulting, and I'll order all folks into your A3 and A4. A3 is entitled Prologis Port Elizabeth, fire truck movement plan, dated August 3, 2013. And A4 is entitled Prologis Port Elizabeth, truck movement plan, dated August 3, 2013. This may clear up some of the turning movements. One is to help, step, exhibits, closer reference, the board members briefly described them. A fire truck movement plan shows a ladder truck being able to exit, and leaving the site in a safe manner, having proper turning radiuses, people navigating, not only around circulation roads, but into the courtyard parking areas. A4 is a similar exhibit, except it chose a track, and movement, associated, normal movements associated with that type of vehicle. As you can see, there's ample drywall width and radiuses on curb turns to accommodate all movements through our site.
A3 is a truck, truck movement?
That's right.
Is it attached?
If there are no questions, with respect to the movement plans, I'd like to refer back to the exhibit. I'd like to refer back to exhibit A2. The development on this side of the property also proposes to put a monument sign around this sign located at the central entrance or office entrance on the eastern side of the building, also on the Capcassen Road. This sign is a turning setback from the right way on the ramp, but requires three various conditions from the Capcassen government of ordinance. The first of which is sign height. We're requesting seven feet or five foot max is allowed. An area radius of 69 square feet where 40 square foot is max allowed. And internal illumination or only external illumination is allowed. The reason the applicant is requesting a sign that's slightly larger than what's allowed by the ordinance are so that, are for a couple reasons. The first of which, it provides sort of safe identification. A larger sign is safer because it'll be easier to identify the site, locate it and safely enter or enter the site at the correct location. Additionally, the sign is in scale of development. You'll see from the architect's renderings that this high-end warehouse that is being developed, the scale of the material is growing very large and a sign, this sign in front of it is not outside the character of this type of design. Also, some of the adjacent properties have larger signs as well. So fit within the area with other developments is known. The applicant is...
I have a basic question on the sign. The sign is in that center of the driveway. I have a truck driver coming down North Avenue. I turn right on the Capcassen Road. The first sign I'm going to see is halfway past the building.
That's correct. And you'd be able to enter the site being this right-in, right-out in the second driveway?
No. Why do you need the first one?
For better search conditions. There's also the possibility that this site may be split by multiple tenants. So in some cases, the truck drivers would have to enter the site if the sign is...
The question that's leading to is, will there be another sign in that corner indicating tenants A, B, C are over here and at the far corner, tenants E, F, G over here?
I believe this zone only allows one sign. We have not proposed a second sign. Should the board be open to a second sign, I don't think the applicant...
I just, my fear is, you pass the driveway and whoops, I got a backup. Do we have the building side, the truck side?
Yes, we have building side.
And will that be visible?
No, we'll see when there is a placement on the architect.
But that's a piece of property there where the trucks or the trailers parked on it. Will it be high enough that I can see that from the road?
That'd be high volume traffic also.
Yeah, there's a lot of traffic at that point. There's a lot of traffic. You gentlemen want to take, have me take a piece of... I mean, that's a concern. That's a very busy area.
Very high volume traffic. There won't be directional signs, partly.
That's what I want to know. Where's this directional sign going to be?
The directional signs that would be provided is at each of these entrances, you would say trucks, trucks access the site here. Additionally, there would be no truck access.
There are going to be more signs than that.
There would, yes, but there are trucks and small directional signs that are...
I'm going to ask the commissioners a question. Would you be amenable to putting larger signs there if they asked for them? Because you won't know how busy that street is. And the last thing I want to see is a truck backing up on that street, missing the driveway, making a U-turn, doing anything like that. Because, you know, Jersey Guard's Mall gets 18 million, 18 million visitors a year. Most of them come by car. And that street is busy. Now, Saturdays and Sundays more so than any other days this week. And I assume this is a 24-hour, 365-day-a-year facility. So bottom line is, I personally would have no objection. Commissioners have to agree with me on that. If they don't agree with me on that, I'm on the rule. But I would have personally no objection to putting a sign visible enough in those corners so the trucks don't go, whoops, I missed it.
Mr. Chairman, this would be a freestanding sign or on the corner of the building?
I would suggest the monument sign would be visible where the truck would come down the street. That's how I...
I think what we have is a combination. You have the monument sign, the sign, you know, in the center, there's going to be a large enough but then underneath...
Large enough, large enough for a truck or, you know, I... And then with split usage, the tenants on this side of the building may not like the trucks driving around on the other side. I mean, I saw a sign, you're looking at all the signs. Where the signs for the site are.
Chair, who's going to tell C D's?
L C D.
Well, they're talking about, they're talking about a good size for the truck, a good size. And, you know, this area has become, this area has become very important to City of Elizabeth with the number of warehouses down there. Which one do you want to focus on?
Yeah. Chairman, in the handout I referred to opening markets, I showed the one.
I'm just, I'm just being sure about safety. I see a sign on the building in front of me. But I don't see any of the proportion. Yeah, there's a portion of that person. I just, tenant identification is important to prison. You know, guess what? Trucks come for the first part. And we got lots of warehouses down there.
We feel that the larger sign we're requesting in centering the site along with which is permitted or directional signage, good size, directional signage, each of the driveways.
Well, I'm going to leave him this way. I mean, obviously, we know what the law just does. I'm going to suggest that if this board approves this application, that you guys sit down with Mr. May or if there were something out to eat, the concerns that the traffic flow in this area could, I mean, the trucks, I go back way back when we built Capcassen Road out to the flyover. And one of the concerns was, how many trucks are going to go flying out of Capcassen Road and that flyover to get to the turnpike? Even though they can get to the turnpike going down the road that way. And there were a lot of trucks that come down that road. I happened to get down there the other day, stuck behind three trucks who couldn't get over 5 miles an hour to get started.
Mr. Chairman, I just briefly spoke with the applicant and his partners. He stated that he would agree to one sign at each driveway, major driveways. And this way, if there are other tenants, the structure would change or something.
I don't think that this board would have objection to putting... There is some variance with one sign. I'm suggesting that the board wouldn't have a problem, shouldn't have a problem with various reasons. Not necessarily that big, but the concern there is, I don't care what you do on the road there. Okay, go down, there's a truck as well. I'm concerned that, God forbid, there's an accident of somebody going in Jersey Guard or on the wall. That's going to be serious ramifications on City of Elizabeth. Much more so that, God forbid, there's a truck accident. And that's about it. Okay, I believe that the lawyers will work it out. If we approve this application, Mr. May, you understand what I'm looking for? We'll make sure it happens.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Of course, the commissioners will approve it if you want.
All right, yes. Don't worry, we're going to move on.
Thank you. Go ahead.
All right, how do we discuss the signs we can belong to, like the next state exhibit?
That's exactly right. As you can see from the exhibit, the applicant is proposing against a tractor as a next state. That's really focused on the Capcassen Road frontage. In all, the applicant wants 174 shade trees, including 20 shade trees immediately along Capcassen Road, 16 decorative trees that are mostly along Capcassen, decorative or flowering. Trees, interestingly, expressed with those shade trees along the corners of the building. There are 38 evergreen trees that provide screening along North Avenue and along the truck doors on the east side of the building. There are also 800 some odd shrubs and 370 ground plantings that are proposed in the office courtyard areas. The lighting proposed is both safety, adequate and dark side compliant. Incorporated in design, there's 20 building mounted lights that are located on the building side, on the truck door side that are located immediately above all the man doors accessing the building. There are also 50 floor mounted light fixtures throughout the site. 22 of which are 40-foot high and remain at 25-foot high. These are all LED structures or fixtures on both structures. The parking areas have been 0.6 foot candles and 2.0 foot candle average. The loading areas are equipped with enough lighting for 0.4 minimum and 1.85 average. That is actually in the better condition in this particular zone. The storage areas are 0.5 minimum and a 1.65 average foot candle. The applicant seeks relief from minimum average requirement of 5.0 foot candles in that we don't think that it's necessary to light this facility. I say that for a few reasons. First, generally, if you put foot candle in above the sign, it's utilized in areas where you have a high conflict between the detouring of cars and shopping centers and things of that nature. There are a lot of people walking around, like, actively so that you don't have people conflicting with moving cars. In this case, we're talking about lighting the loading area. This is on the northern and south area courtyards for the dock door locations of this building. Additionally, this facility is loaded with LED lights and because LED lights are relatively new technology, they're really differently than the standard pressure sodium in that the old type of lighting, you have hot spots immediately under multiple locations. And when you put multiple locations, you would have a higher average because you have such bright intensity immediately below. When you're lighting the LED fixtures, the lights are more dispersed and more capable of recognizing light. And that's evident in the design drawings, in the low uniformity ratio. Normally, uniformity ratios range from three or four in this particular design than I want because there's a more uniform lighting using LED. But we're requesting a waiver for the design requirement for providing five foot candle ladders in the trucks courtyards where 1.85 average is utilized. With respect to school management, generally, in the existing condition, we're referring to exhibit A4. It generally defines existing, most 7500 square foot structure. Anything east of that generally drains towards Capcassen Road. Anything west of that drains towards the existing weapons along the western property line and a school area goes to North Avenue. In the joint design, that is not changing. The site generally grades east and west to existing drainage facilities. Overall, we have reduced the deduction in surface coverage, therefore, flow reductions are not required. Filtration is not required either because it's a urban redevelopment and also a landfill. Lowland development is achieved through... This is the land of Lowland Park. In Lowland Park development, or W I P, is achieved through land use, reducing the amount of surface coverage. Water quality is addressed through hydrodynamic structures at discharge point. We do have any other issues with NJDPD for multiple flood pattern and weapons permits associated with our discharge points along the western property line. This site will have, is proposing to have new utility locations which will include a water and sewer, a new water and sewer line into existing public facilities named Capcassen Road. As I said, this site, it is a landfill. In the existing conditions, it is a packed landfill. Ongoing renovation on the site due to the fact that the existing structure is currently being demolished. As you've checked in the visit, you've seen that some of the signboards have come down. This will be coordinated by a site developer's party and has a major disruption permit from the NJDPD to do that disturbance on this particular site. When the site is redeveloped, it will be tacked again and continued to be a landfill. I've addressed all of the various and major conditions, but I just wanted to use a quickly, we're asking for various conditions for sign height, area, illumination. The chairman has directed us, in his opinion, has suggested, given us his opinion that up to two additional signs on this former area could be utilized on this site. Additionally, we're including the light, light 40 feet or 25 foot part and the illumination, which are just discussed. The board doesn't have any questions, like, here, the professionals, the new letter of our consultant?
If you could talk a little bit, but...
Commissioners, any questions?
And again, you have, September 26, 2013, and we begin. Yeah, it's all listed.
I tried. I think, I think... Commissioners, is there any questions from the commissioners?
Yes.
You're saying yes, okay.
My question is about waiting also capacity. I'll maybe tell them to use stick for the date.
We had a traffic, I was hoping to see if I can defer any question to him. The new testimony regarding traffic.
Any others?
Just in regards to the signs, the side of the signs. Coming, when the trucks are coming off, it's the, the sign that's going to spark away. So they're only going to be able to write?
That's correct.
So there's a big sign saying, hold on, trucks.
That's correct. There will also be an island, a curt island in the middle that will direct the traffic in that direction so that it's not even going to be a sign, there'll be something that includes that.
Two questions. Lightning around the facility and also drains by, where, where trucks have initial out of the drainage? And pipe where, as our flow? Question is, is that...
Yeah, we're proposing a collection system along the north and south facades. They will drain to existing drainage pipelines that exist along this weapon on the western side of the property.
The western side?
That's correct. Now, approximately a third of the way east, that drains towards West Capcassen Road, but there's some existing drainage wells that along Capcassen Road intend to utilize those drainage wells. Do you have any specific condition for it?
Well, oh, there's something my letter, my counsel has you. My letter, the applicant, my letter requests that the applicant, I don't mind, the motion today was conditional that they have not analyzed the existing system. So they're just taking a good time to examine the system. Our letter, our consultants request that the applicant study the existing system. See, his advocate would accept this, what?
That's what I'm asking.
That's a good question.
That's what I'm asking.
If it does not, they have to perform additional onsite attention. Does the pre-engineer normally say, well, existed, look at the existing condition? Guess what? The existing condition doesn't work.
Right, no, I was going to say.
There's also a little difficulty he had with the water avenue. That's coming from down the street.
Yes, uh, that's actually in our view, page 406. Are we 40? Page 406, yes.
And your papers are provided by the fire drainage regulations in order to ensure that the water does not increase the flow of the cycle.
Right, so they have to do some dramatic changes to their drainage based on what they discover. They do additional study of all sites. They do additional study of all sites, also. Make sure that where they're buying the city, if it doesn't have the capacity, then they may have either increased capacity, tension, or it's going to go through all sites. Having that analysis.
Hold on, I couldn't get it over to Hawaii, apologies. Go ahead, we can.
I have not done that analysis to date, but they're agreeing with the testimony. And the approval would be conditioned upon them doing that analysis. Our office will be doing it along the city engineers.
Okay. Okay, thank you. What might, did you just cover, I need a fourth question? My, yes, okay. Thank you. May I ask you?
I have a question, Victor, as to your detail sheet, fix it in the retaining wall. Looks like it may exist before the river property.
That's right. We're proposing a retaining wall from the property detail sheet to the grid, but it does not show how tall that wall is. If the guy is lighting, the only part.
The main question is, does the wall have something there that does, the type of wall you're using to module the walls? That's right, that requires a tieback system. The tieback system is to create problems and estimation in the future. You could curve it and stall, kill this road, difficult to break the tieback system. So sometimes, so choose the right type of wall. There's nine, it doesn't require, that's why we're trying to tie back system. So the issue would be a medium, optional in the wall that require a change of.
Yes. Yes, we could redesign that retaining wall, with a detailed retaining wall to use something that can improve.
Can you agree? Can you agree? Yeah, fit for concrete block, but just, there's a block, having ten tenants deal. In fact, the detail shows a light pole that goes through the tieback system. So do it in your sheet. Okay, so a whole lot of like that. Also, what has the, you mentioned fire parts?
We have.
So another condition would be the acting fire parts. Place hydrants, we built a couple hydrants in the parking area. And we request additional hydrants, but we only had that being in the fire part. One more question. We got showing the detail sheet, the fencing, but there's fencing, law around this side. We're ready, as if you're sectioned lines in the parking lot. Normally, fencing, we asked a large building like this. Do you know what type of fence you propose?
We are, if you can refer to the site that's submitted to the board, detail sheet one, sheet eighteen, in the left corner. The applicant proposes an eight-foot high chain link skirt.
If normally, we asked, come to this picture and we're driving from the city again today, here. A lot of it, any fencing along either North Avenue or Cacast Road? Not the same, more decorative, decorative on it.
Now, the first, if I may, that we propose along those frontages. The first question for North Avenue starts at the corner here, it's in the existing, it's a fence that comes down. First, North Avenue is climbing, it's the airway, the railway and turnpike. This fence is hidden on the northwest side, so the applicant, we asked them to leave from that. Should the court require, the applicant is open to providing decorative fence along the North Avenue frontage. The, there is no fence directing along the Cacast Road frontage. The only fencing that faces it is near the courtyards, at these two locations, on the northeast and southeast.
There's no fence, there's no fence?
There's no fencing along here, no, there's no fencing along the roadway in the general area. This is open to public view. The first fence was along this first dock door and along this parking area and then at this one.
I have no objection to fence there, I really think, you know, we had an examination two months ago of the product, yeah, I had seen it. There were some burrs and some landscaping, and also was higher and hiding all of that. I come over that bridge very often and I can see that part. And it's not very attractive, it will be more attractive with trees there. You're putting trees along the part that can't be seen. I think that at least a nice piece of decorative fence in the wall, that section. And I know that is the part that's going to protect the fence, but because some drivers have done development on, have that kind of fence. That kind of fence. You know, wearout thing is important, but so is the status. People are coming there to go to the mall. And I think they, you know, it's a mixed zone and it should look as pretty as possible till we get to the mall. And I think the people across the street, Rashid Hill is, did a nice job on that. It's a small section, I don't ask, what's the distance of that?
It's partially six hundred feet, that frontage. I discuss with the applicant, he's giving the thumbs up, so we can agree as a condition to actually.
Well, I'm sorry, not on North Avenue. Not on North Avenue, you have possibly at the scene of your, just two little stuff to the fence that's lined, you know, also along the council.
I brought a tree there.
Well, you could, well, tree like would be good.
No, they have. You're talking about changing the level of the building, you should.
That's correct.
That is correct. So I'm sorry, you suggested, like, well, fence, and then first, I'll go back, just go back to the council.
You're using, is it something for detention or is it just rail trailer?
Along Cacast Road, there are existing drains, that's correct.
And you, your client does not want a fence that.
No, we're not proposing a fence in that area.
Actually, you're not looking at fences in that parking lot for employees.
No.
We should hear it, so. Okay, so, but my other question is, if you have a fence that go around all the dryworks? Do you live in a drywall building? There's gates and the drywall.
That's correct.
Well, yeah, I don't see that many developments in the city, that each. I know the, the thought process of processing, breaking the building up maybe in the end or the third quarter.
Right, similar with what I was just saying.
But you don't show it, or is it sure? I know this is probably, I have to think.
Gate gaps, there are gate gaps. Wait, somebody's gonna drive over to the gate with a truck, somebody there.
In some cases, in some cases, they have automated gates.
Every truck or truck in the site that happens, something that works.
Depending on the tenant, yes, if not, the gate, the gate has to be open during operations.
Which is 24 hours a day.
That's correct.
So why would you gate it?
No, I think.
I mean, I would, let's go back, just to give the neighbors a, every one of the hotels, just a sample. Their parking area is completely gated, because unfortunately, when they didn't have gates, cars would buy down. And I don't think the tenants in the building go up here, employees' cars disappeared. So you may want to think about that. I'm not asking you to make a decision on that, you may want to think about having employees have some kind of gate card that opens and closes the gate, but they're there, no one's gonna steal a truck. Cars disappear, even there's gardens, all, there's wide open spaces, cars go both. They have my camera, it's gonna go, just a salt.
I think, Mr. Chairman, what we possibly could do is, besides the decorative fence that front, Cacast and north, is during construction, as you get near the CO or TCO, I can sit with partners, whoever, tenant may, we can call the fence.
Right, I agree.
That has security, the other issue too is the security of the employees.
I'm sorry.
And technically too, we've had issues, not just a list, but all through workers.
Right.
You might apply your landscaping.
At the last. I'll say my neighboring community, we have problems in the north of us, that's ten, ten percent of the family. That's as far as I'm aware of that. And, you know, I've been involved in the city very long time. Thank God the problem's been under control lately, but it still happens. And prevention is, announcing prevention is worth now, if you can prevent that from happening. I, I think the fencing issue can be taken up later, for the time as construction's going on. I, I want to make it look nice, but I don't want to make it, you know, remember, changing the fence is not as pretty as other fence. But I also don't want to make the project too expensive, and I can do, but I think this is something that's.
Well, maybe, I would tell you that conversation, anyways, are available.
We just did a nice walkthrough today of the Wafer facility, which is closest to TCO.
Sorry, I'll have to get.
The Wafer facility, which is here, we requested for a TCO. During the walkthrough, the notice with the chain link that issued inside the park is all vinyl clad and a ground colored capacity building. You know, extended vehicles. So, or that's that, that's onsite, most of it is vinyl clad and color capacity building. So, or something, and then placing the gates to our houses, we can give them as they get here to have the tent out of the building.
I know they're full of those. And, you know, we, we love the idea that they get to the city and they're all on land, they're getting it to go. They've got two major projects going on right now, this one's approved. And I, I, we want employees there to be safe, and we want the vehicles that come there to be safe, so I think that, that's something to handle again. Any other comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
And you answered the question of another person. It's about security of the building, guarantee the security.
You understand the ladies.
Okay, my question is concerned about the security of the building because I understand, you're trying to stay. And guarantee the kind of merchandise that is inside your shop.
I can't take a record, I have to share. She's interested in understanding the kind of merchandise that's inside. I can't answer that, they don't have a tenant. But I'm sure that if the tenant showed up at the office or dining room, they might not get anything from this. Or voice of applause.
But if there's some of those, all that, the issues in this, about us.
Because I have a control before and I have a lot of issues about, I'm working for a game company and they keep you training about security for areas, specifically out of the control, that's my case. And I've been there before for gamer.
If you can go all the way, let's go out.
Mr. Chairman. If there's only the prices of our site, if you care, I'd like to pull on Scott Burnout, who's our, our project manager. Our team.
My name is Scott Burnout, SCOT, M U R, D O C H. I work for KSS Architects at 337 Flit Street, Princeton, Georgia.
Has anything designated to make sure the business is?
I thank you.
And are all your licenses, all of your licenses still?
They're still in good order.
In good order, but we still will recognize your resume. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my name, and the testimony, and the witnesses so far, so you think, if I have to take the board to the D, the floor plan is not a vacation for the project, I can also discuss the signage associated with the building.
Sure. The floor plan, as you've seen in the previous site plan, is, is a fairly simple plan. The building is roughly five hundred feet wide by nine, over nine hundred feet deep, resulting in 422,000 pounds per feet. Loading docks occur along the north and the south facades. And at each end, in the next front of Cacast Road and the front, confronting the turnpike, we've introduced a greater degree of articulation where the likely locations of the office. Sure, that exhibit A5 is, I think, A5.
Yes, A5.
And this exhibit A5 is an exterior perspective of the view looking at the southeast corner of the building from Cacast Road.
The issue is, is you have, this is my statement about it, wasn't the page number?
That's correct. I believe it's somewhere around the sixth page of the package.
Pretty close.
Yes, it's the first pretty, it's the first good looking image of the photo. It's, it's, but basically, this is a text and you're looking from, almost from the Jersey Garden side of Cacast Road, the back of the building. And you see, we've introduced a broken down, large scale facade by recessing the building and then also breaking forward when the entrance to the building would occur, giving a sense, a nice sense of corporate identity to any one of the users who may come to be within the facility. Steve, you mentioned about signage, and the approach for the building, we're taking, and we break it down into three components of building mounted signage. One large sign occurs on the east facade and the west facade that identifies the pro-louders trend. This is similar to the project that was reviewed and approved by the Urban Weather Support about two months ago for the Seaport side. In addition, there'll be another sign that will be immortal for use by the fire department that has its address and is clearly visible, and that will be also located on the east facade building. And then lastly, there will be four, up to four, there are up to four offices in that, in this building. In each of those potential locations, we're looking to achieve a unique tenant sign. We don't have the aesthetics of what those signs will be, but we have identified the proposed area. It would be the line for each one of those tenants, up to approximately 126 square feet per sun.
And you don't have a place to get.
We, they would go over top of each one of the major entrances, so that large, large element would be a tenant sign. Again, very consistent with some of the signs that you see in the Jersey Garden, all would clearly be those, that you used to say. Correct. But it would clearly identify a wall that would be elegant and would be very tasteful, fun later. Again, help with wayfinding and safe access to the building.
Cat one.
Safe access to the building. I have another exhibit also within your books. I'll call this building exhibit A6. I got mine. This is a view of the coming south bend along North Avenue. This is the view of the office from the end, the building, the long dock. So again, very similar parts like that, principally, slightly, or different aesthetic than the other corner. All to view in the building, plenty of visual interest.
Any other, the commissioner, any questions?
Yes, I'd like now, in Sarah, Art Traffic Engineer. In Sarah. Yes.
Same number, it's like.
Sort of a Dan, last name is Zario, T I S, A O, I O, but flying engineering, headquarter, the network. headquarters, leaving that one part of Jersey.
You have any other points to add?
Yes, I have.
So you recognize you as an expert with this today, or vice versa?
Yes, sir.
You recognize you as an expert.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Sarri, refer us to the letter to the board dating September twenty, thirteen?
Yes.
If you could please provide to the board with an overview of the findings in that letter, your, your testimony, and if there's more to this question from one of the commissioners with respect to the number of truck, truck traffic.
Sir. Um, essentially, I'm going to give a lot of time to go through the traffic aspect, and you've heard a lot of the traffic testimony already from these witnesses. I will tell the reserve for the advocates, it just the building was built in nineteen sixty-eight, a year before I was called in. A site without question from a traffic perspective, as it likes to access this regulation and the building itself is quite generic. I think this board has probably seen numerous applications for this area of the city, because a lot of these warehouses, we saw the section of cities handling, so we've seen a lot of applications out there, involved a lot of foray of into new, minor warehouse facilities. This application achieves that. With respect to the size of the building that's proposed, it's, it's more or less the same size as the existing building. And that's trying to study so far in external traffic perspective. It's meant to be that operations in the surrounding roadways, the large building being the same as they were in the previous user, that access and full operation. But that's not the reason. Correct, I was kidding, it's a much better, that full operation, so that when this building is completed, we're going to see a change in traffic pattern there that we haven't seen, we haven't seen that type of traffic in a while.
That is true, Mr. Chairman, in terms of historical basis, such associated traffic and access and access. Because in the meantime, the number of, the number of trucks translating from Cassie Road has increased, number of trucks coming out.
Without question.
And, and quite frankly, you will continue to see an increase in traffic, Mr. Eric, because of the expansion of the board.
Large changes to the level.
Absolutely. And this court has to stay competitive with the other courts along these things.
I go back, just, we can tell this very quickly, I go back to, uh, when I first became involved with the study of the port, ninety percent of the traffic was trucks, ten percent of the rail were being shot, thirty percent of the rail, forty percent rail, and sixty percent trucks. And they got to that point where the number of trucks represented in that sixty percent more than the trucks represented in the ninety percent.
Without question.
But that part has grown so dramatically.
And I think, as a large part of our citizens, I was the fourth secretary, to make it, keep it a very competitive report, which is further than we know.
Obviously, most of my, I recognize that report is well.
Absolutely. And the job of the commission as well, that warehouse that is proposed is a model facility, you've heard the term from the second, it's a high key warehouse. Employee counts, we expect, as you heard from the advocate on quarter three, maybe five hundred, forty, over three shifts, vertical tanks of this nature. And I think that's important because those types of facilities, this shift changes usually occur outside of normal commuting times. So from an entry perspective, these types of model warehouse facilities are often quite compatible with the surrounding area because they're generating their employee shift changes, changes during times of deep weather in the area or community are not commutative. So the urban pattern can offset, uh, it's usually going to, is busy all the time as well, particularly on Fridays and Saturdays and Sundays as they're located. Do you just decide that you're a person from Cassie Road, the proposed project for you is proposing to repair Casse on Cassie Road? In Harvard Consulting, you lettered, was questioned as to the proximity of the subway park in relation to the Jersey Gardens, a little more civilized intersection. Just for clarification, so the record is clear, that subway driveway will be leading to rightings and rightals, and it has been designed to reinforce those movements via signage, driveway, as well as the center of the driveway. And I'll just leave you with this, two more points. So one of the conditions, I have a question relating to the amount of trucks this facility will generate. Typically speaking, this type of warehouse will generate about five hundred and trucks on average every hour over the course of their operating day, which should be quite potentially likely between four hours.
That's true.
But we, we did not speak to the daily truck, truck generation, the letter speaks to the peak hour truck generation of the facility. We would have about fifty to sixty vehicles during the day.
When is the project will generate possibly thirty-seven entry vehicles and sixteen exit vehicles during the morning?
Right, skip.
And, correct.
Um, that was a, that was a week.
That's true, we, we, right.
But this is a twenty-four hour a day, three hundred sixty-five day a year operation. So there will be traffic on Saturdays and Sundays.
Yes, there will.
It may not be as hot as during the week, but there will be traffic.
That is for more life.
More life goes up on Saturdays and Sundays.
And generally speaking, the poor traffic does go down on the weekends.
But they're absolutely great, Mr. Chairman.
This facility will generally traffic on weekends as well.
But I believe, I, I, I do believe what Commissioner Ford was saying is that the more traffic in the weekends is relatively low, Friday, Saturday, Sunday higher, whereas I believe the truck traffic will be higher during the weekend, probably lower on Friday, Saturday, Friday evening, Saturday, Sunday.
Correct.
So that in general, that would be an average about, say.
That is true.
And during the holiday season, all, during that time, it's, it's very, I know you have another traffic study for that time.
Yeah, the concern, the concern that I had, what is the traffic rate now in that block, that area? C is it, B is it? We haven't done. We have, and I can tell you from my experience, having done a bunch of applications in the area, generally speaking, and I worked on the turnpike project, which you referenced earlier.
Correct.
So we were looking at several things to be, to make sure the development of the mall. When I had that study, there are air stations that do experience some delays, like, like how do you, Cassie Road, it's the main point of entry into the airport. So at times, is there delays at that intersection?
I go back, I go back to, several other commissions go back to, there was one lane each direction on the turnpike, and the turnpike fought us with a double bit, it wanted three lanes in each direction. No, no, we just needed to look at that. I mean, there is, somewhere is that road that is for the darkness, we have to get that road, so the trucks go on top and the cars go on the bottom. I mean, that was an idea that was talked about way back then too. The bottom line is, thank God it's getting busy, but the capacity, the port capacity is not there anymore.
And if the North Island, the Water Arm, the project, would ever get lost, they would stop.
Right, right.
They would have that in a quarter.
That would stop a lot of problems too.
But we know with the multi-party jurisdictional agreements and everybody's actually, by all of them.
And if they had, like, that, the ferry would take a pretty good time with it, unless the skyway is under, which I think is a great idea, there would be more traffic down there as well. I mean, the, I mean, rationale is that, I think it can handle is that in the future, something could happen, you know?
And we conclude that it's not, and I conclude with a review of the security. And hopefully with that, you know, that improvement project, actually, if it does happen.
And right if they're lucky to back work, it's got to bring money.
Where if I was to look at, that's another issue that I'll play by. Um, now, so maybe with one of, come to the, the orientation of the site itself, relative to traffic, circulation, access, without question, was before you, it was infinitely better than the existing site. There's separation of the truck loading combinations, the truck ports are separated from passenger parking areas, circulation, dual circulation around the entire site. The location of a passenger car, only drive, counts the road, or certain parking area on the side of the building, all these elements add on to, I believe, this makes it respectable as a well thought out, well designed site, just officially providing a solution on the part of it.
Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Chair, please, one last question. Trucks exiting, I guess, the south and turning to the right, getting a right, getting turned around Cassie Road, heading towards the wall. You were doing heat trip counts for that, with the cars exiting the wall and trucks in that area? Is that the back way on the wall?
Right, we did not do the whole counts.
Sorry, there's a line.
Sorry, there's a line, because there is a line, a high line area, also.
Did?
You know, both sides, uh, you were saying the north, there's, there's.
Right, it is, that's the way back to the turnpike as well. There are trucks there now, now, you can drive there now. There are plenty of trucks that go down that road, uh, from the time that line is in here now.
And also.
Five X, five X trucks now are on the, that's not, that's not terrible.
And you talked about when that boat was built, about saying the trucks can't drive that way in the turnpike, and yet, that never happened. There's not, there's not much you can do with that. That road has capacity.
Yeah.
That road has capacity. There's a new hotel opening there.
It's lighting point, there's two traffic lights.
There's one traffic light at, uh, Jersey Garden on South, there's one in the middle where they're all the way going into the wall. It's not, the middle going toward another tower, and, and also in the wall, and then there's the one address, uh, Cassie, uh, South.
Yeah.
All the way down with, with the flag.
Yes. And, and just so it's clear, there is dual circulation around the entire site. So trucks are not, if they're on the south side of the building, from driving, clock round pieces, way around the other way, they go out to that.
But that's problematic too, because they've left turn of their course.
It is, Mr. Chairman, you know, basically, you have a redevelopment area.
You have, you have a very interesting situation here. I was spoken to something a couple of hundred, hundred months ago, now regret that they didn't buy the landfill that's now Jersey Garden Mall. The bottom line is, they didn't, you have retail, citywide distribution, and that is, sometimes incompatible, but we have to make it work.
And they sold the property then, wherever he says they, they own that property, they regret that too.
There is an answer, but they don't want to listen.
I understand what you mean.
Okay, any other questions? Anyone in the audience has any questions to this witness, any questions to the previous witnesses? If not, Commissioner, heard the application, is there any other closing statement?
No, I don't have a closing statement.
Heard the application, and I'm going to take the prerogative of giving them a hard time, I'm going to make the motion to approve this application presented before this board. May I accept?
Uh, sir, would I, would I, would the conditions, uh, if the conditions, I'm just gonna say, would you, the conditions on the signage, the chain link, then all of the discussion, I think, all the things that we said would be discussed in the future, you will discuss in the future?
In, yeah, Bruno, you're right.
Yes, sir.
Can I say a condition that applies damage in scale?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Applies to that. As, 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 we can change the case that we have lost the match.
That's all. Okay. Can I say this?
Yes, yes, okay.
All right. This is for.
Commissioner Gervale, five.
Commissioner Gervale, five.
Commissioner Reber, five.
Commissioner Javala.
Uh, yeah.
Hi.
Commissioner Reber.
Uh.
Commissioner Gervale.
Um, Chairman.
All right. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, we'll keep it, Mr. Chairman. Ready, ready, ready? Okay, next case, we're going to be application, have a case. The next case will be E twelve thirteen, Barack Headman, six eighty-eight, big web in housing authority city, with the business of the O T. Thank you, Commissioner. Since this is a round, straightforward, uh, heading off.
Sorry.
Mike?
Mike, yeah.
No, Mike, so, we did, wait, 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 here. Yes, you can turn around. He's, he's, he's tied down.
Since this is a relatively straightforward, uh, limited, and only saving, in all my first ways, or any license.
Stand up, you're both joining. You do sound respectful, just from the beginning, and you're two all good, and I think that's good. Victor.
Victor, thank you. City, thank you.
State your names by your name, Mr. Chairman.
My name is Jorge Valencio. My name is Jorge Valencio, I'm the P A O E N C I D.
Your address?
Four sixteen dollar avenue, also called Jersey.
And your, your occupation?
I am modernization director for the housing authority, single, as of modernization.
Very, very familiar with the, uh, project?
I am.
What does the housing authority propose to build?
The housing authority is looking for site capital for, in addition to our existing community building around that pad.
Where, in relation to the ground that we have, will this, uh, anything, no?
It's, it will be built within the confines of the project, basically, it's not, it's a little bit.
Yep. Part. Yes. All right. I never thought it was, uh, you could do. We can ask you a different question. We're trying to find a better answer. I never thought it was, uh, that might be, uh, Mr. Valencio, could you explain, uh, where the confines of our, of this, this building will be built?
It will be built, basically, like I began saying, in the middle of the complex, attached to our existing community center, uh, we, the streets of, 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 Kanye's Clarkson Avenue, in Carver.
Yep. I always, I've been building this record by the housing conference, right? Correct, because everything, yeah, a bunch of that, for the properties. Now, Mr. Valencio, what would the building consist of?
The building that we're, we're, this is for approval for is the addition, uh, will house our manager's.
Okay.
The reason why we want to do this is because our current manager's office is located in a apartment within the complex.
That's the manager office for the Barack Headman.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, what does that office consist of? How many people?
Uh, the office staffs, uh, they are approximately eighty-one or so.
And what will this addition, how, this is different, how many offices will there be?
It will have, uh, four office spaces and one open cubicle area, as well as a reception area and a waiting room.
Now, the people who will be working in this, they're already working on the site?
Correct, uh, they will not be bringing in outside individuals, we are relocating the existing staff.
And, um, you indicated that they will presently house. When it's closer, it's down, so, because I mean to this foot, that there is parking lot, so the employees are now parking and parking lot, so there's no additional parking when they get back to work.
Yes, sir, yes. Building is, doesn't have parking lot, or anything, but actually somewhere employees do park. Think that. We will not be requiring additional parking.
Now. I have no further questions. Commissioners, are there any questions for Mr. Leantyne on this project?
There are.
There is an existing parking lot, if you look at the overhead shot, the.
I think there's a parking lot.
They would even, they would park, probably would say, park is basically a parking lot.
Well, no, parks is a park now, parks is, parks is that now.
We have two parking lots, Indian construction building, and the park that directly touches the existing community center. There are also three spaces that are reserved for staff parking during the day, so we instantly like.
And the handicap, that's still the means park.
Yes, there is, and that accessible parking right from the building, if you can see the area.
I see it.
There is approximately.
The park is a basketball court.
That is the.
Quarter.
Yes, that, that is the basketball court, but.
My question is, will you be the path so that there's a way in there? You're going to have to rearrange the parking area so that there's any accessibility of the question.
Actually, there, there already isn't that.
That's okay, that's nice, that's nice. What, I can, I can, so, so, what's the, the side of the building? What will be?
The addition will not exist in the building exactly. Same building, there was a slam on the road, basically.
And the exterior.
Uh, makes.
Again, no further questions. Commissioners, any other questions?
There are, yes, I'm sorry. Over here, sir. There's no additional floor, same levels.
Okay.
No additional floor.
Uh, no, just, basically, we are getting existence that, well, we need a little over party, Indian building, and to open a parking, that would currently using as office space, put it back in.
So that it asks, you can add, why do you stand it?
Right.
Okay. Yes, I got a question beside my floor. William. Parker.
Sit down, you just want to say that when you get to the control, there's nothing else to do. Name and address of the work. First, William, who is the Park Hill P A R K H I L. So here with the state of the area, Park Hill, I have seventy-nine from the lab, or downtown. They are N S W O R T H. And we're. Board of.
Have you ever appeared before this?
I have not appeared before this board, I have not appeared, uh, before various boards of the state of Jersey, shared your education background and licenses. Turnaround Science Engineering, I'm a professional engineer in the state of Jersey, the College of Jersey, okay, good to know.
And you appear before other boards? Have you ever appeared before any boards in the state?
I have not appeared before any boards in the state, welcome to the state, you recognize it, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Parker, uh. The, you appeared the side bank?
Yes, sir.
Is that, could, could you mark your places?
A one.
A one.
Would you like to mark the aerial questions that the site manager directed? And could you be the director of what A one is and what A two is? Um, A one is the site plan for the community building expansion at Rad Light Manor, city of Elizabeth. Um, A two, it was an aerial photo with the proposed location of the addition, prepared by my office, titled Community Building Expansion at Rad Light Manor.
And that. I'll start just to do a brief overview. The subject property, Rad Light Manor, is existing, housing authority in city of Elizabeth. Property consists of.
Would you please let me sit back so I can see your face?
Sure. The subject property is turned out from the housing authority in city of Elizabeth, consisting of four hundred and twenty acres of industrial park maintenance and community building. The community building is subject of this application. Um, the property is located within the park three zone, which is a multifamily housing zone. Proposed addition is added in office space for this, uh, permitted use and therefore permitted accessories. Um, the addition is one thousand six hundred and eighty-six thousand, one thousand six hundred and eighty-six square feet. Um, and is in addition to existing five levels for the community building. Have you appeared in, during the?
Yes, we have. The journey's like, consists of tying into the existing, tying into the existing, collecting all of the, from all from the proposed addition, tying it underground to the smaller system.
And A one, is that a particular source?
Yes.
The, the next or waiver of the lighting, it's why you are.
Uh, yes, the, um, proposed addition is located on the, um, south end, actually, I'm sorry, I got to reiterate myself, that's the north end of, um, the existing community building located between the basic community building and existing basketball court. Uh, the basketball court is not being modified, nor are any of the river sidewalks that surround this area. All the site plan that currently exists is located outward of the sidewalks that surround this sixteen hundred square foot area that were proposed in addition. We're not making any modifications, we're rolling to the existing site lighting, therefore the construction of our addition will not alter the existing site lighting as it existed there.
And what about the elevation? Will there be any proposed alteration to the elevation of the site?
Uh, there will not be, as Mr. Leantyne has stated, the main purpose of the building is to have office space for any accessibility of residents. So the finished floor elevation of the proposed addition, which is at the existing community center, that is accessible from two handicap parking spaces in that parking lot adjacent to the existing building. Those spaces are about seventy-five feet from the proposed entrance from the addition, and there is a fully accessible path from those parking spaces to the entrance and, and ultimately lobby of the proposed management office.
The landscaping will be provided for.
Yeah, yes, the intention of this is that the landscaping will match at the existing building. Um, this is a, um, this site does, apparently consists of just a small area between the existing building and existing sidewalks, which consist of mulch, um, chowder, flowers, and the intention would be that that sanctuary is patterned around the addition to match the existing building.
I have no further questions. Commissioners, questions for this witness?
I have one, just on the floor today. There's access for the existing building directly into this space, that will be a lot of.
That is correct. Judging by the resident, looks like the third street facility, has a basement window, uh, in the reception area. Looks to me like not easily accessible, except service counter, who has the. Sounds like something you might want to pay.
Of where people go to pay the rent.
Right, so I assume that this is a secure facility, if you wanted to get into that facility, somebody has opened a door, let you in.
That's correct, as the entire community building is that exists.
So this. Door that you can take, come down into the facility, there is a door there that would be locked, if someone came that way, someone would have to come to that door.
That's correct, and that door is, the purpose of that door is for, um, degress, progress, in order to exit the building in an emergency.
I don't think that is necessary. Okay, anyone in the audience that can contribute a second question? If not, gentlemen, ladies, please. Move the resolution to vote second by Commissioner Strauss.
Commissioner Paul.
Hi.
Commissioner Curvall. Hi. Commissioner Rivera. Hi. Commissioner Rivera. Hi. Chairman.
Hi. Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Wanted to know. Give you a little, give you a little, Mr. Yes, sir. Mr. President, quick hour, so. I thought at least one. I was made of a list of the. Twenty years. Nineteen seventy, nineteen twelve, he was a medical doctor. What? He was a medical doctor. Okay, and what does he have to do with this? They just decided to make it. I guess, so the school, little, this is, this is. Very much. Thank you very much. My motion would.